Alderman Malamoye, Alderman Burgess. Here. Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon. Mayor Renner.
Here. And again, just so that everyone understands, Alderwoman Bray is calling in and that's the voice that you hear over the microphone. And let the record show that our distinguished councilman Malamoye has just arrived. Okay.
You'll need a motion to approve Alderman.
Oh, thank you very much. I wonder if we could have a -- that can be by voice vote, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to allow Alderwoman Kim Bray to participate electronically?
No, moved.
Wow, okay, that was -- thank you. Lightning speed. Moved by Alderwoman Burgess, second by Alderman Mathie. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Kim, are you there?
Thank you, yes, I'm here.
Okay, you're good to go and we're all good to go. And we'll move on from here. And just to clarify, we do have an executive session in the middle -- or not, toward the beginning of this particular meeting. So we will actually adjourn into executive session. We will go downstairs. This will take us approximately 10 minutes, five more minutes maybe in transition, and we will be back. Okay. So that, again, that's toward the beginning of this segment of our meeting, our special meeting. Okay, at this point, I wonder if everyone could stand for a pledge of allegiance? Oh, excuse me, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're -- no, we're -- we'll start with public comment. And we have one person who has signed up for public comment, and that is Renee Nessler. Renee, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Renee Nessler, staff representative from Askeyne Local 699 Public Works. On tonight's agenda, you have the opportunity to make a decision that could end the almost annual discussions on solid waste. You have three possible options, but only one real solution. One option is to explore outsourcing. We are against this option for many reasons. Many citizens like the guys that do the work and the level of services they receive. Outsourcing would disrupt and possibly end both. While the city could lose control over the services, there would be less accountability, a reduction in services, and increased costs as a private company's goal is to make a profit. It cannot be forgotten the many extras that solid waste workers provide to the city. They are a significant part of snow and ice removal operations. They clean up illegal dump sites, operate the drop-off facility, and do alley maintenance. They do street cleaning, clean up debris after car accidents, and pick up items from the street that have fallen out of moving vehicles. They also retrieve garbage and recycle bins near a citizen's home for no additional cost and qualified for the medical assistance program. At times, they also cross over into the streets division. All of these extras are at risk with outsourcing, all of which would still need to be done and paid for by someone. Exploring outsourcing will result in months of uncertainty for our members and citizens with continued regular discussions about solid waste. Exploration will result in no immediate action to address the ongoing issue of the city needing to subsidize the solid waste fund. Further, learn from Pekin, who explored outsourcing in November 2016 and decided not to. They found outsourcing their solid waste services would cost $521,000 more per year. For these reasons, exploring outsourcing must be ruled out tonight. Another option is to reduce the level of services. While there have been suggestions made about changing the level of services offered, it's unclear how some of these suggestions would work and what the actual cost savings would be. With some of the suggestions, there are more cons than pros. Our concern is that these options have limitations and result in continued discussions about solid waste. The only option or solution that would allow citizens to keep the services they have with the same workers they appreciate are to increase the fees to actually cover the costs of the services provided. Several years ago, solid waste was designated an enterprise fund but in name only. Fees have never been enough to cover the services provided and citizens enjoy. With proposed fee increases, it's projected the solid waste fund would be self-funded while also meeting reserve requirements. While no one enjoys increased fees, in this case, you will know exactly the quality and level of services you are receiving with the workers you know. The solution would put the solid waste discussions to rest. Please vote no to outsourcing and yes to increasing the fees for a long-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. At this point, we have consideration of approving the minutes of the special meeting of January 22, 2018, and the joint special session meeting minutes of January 16, 2018. Are there any corrections, or is there a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve as mayor.
Moved as -- motion to move and as presented, excuse me, by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Black. Any further discussion? Okay, if you'll go ahead and vote electronically.
Mine's not on.
Oh, it's not on?
No.
There it is, okay. And let the record show that Alderman Sage has joined us. And Alderwoman Bray, how do you vote on this?
I vote yes.
Yes? Okay, we have -- let the record show then that we have an eight to zero vote on the minutes, and I'm going to go ahead and clear that. And at this point, we have -- can I entertain a motion under number 5A to go into closed session for approximately 10 minutes to discuss a personnel matter as identified under 5A, section 2C, that is listed on our agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion on this? And at this point, you can go ahead and -- a roll call on that one? I'm sorry. Okay, if we have a roll call on that one. Thank you, Madam clerk, for keeping me straight.
Alderman Bray?
Yes.
Alderman Mathie?
Yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Malamoye?
Yes.
Alderman Burgess?
Yes.
Alderman Painter?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
And Alderman Harmon. Thank you.
Okay, again, and Kim, we will be calling you from downstairs and then reconnecting with you when we come back up here in approximately 10 or 15 minutes, okay?
And we will take action on other agenda items when we return.
Correct. And we will take action, so we will begin with essentially item eight that is listed on your agenda. Thank you very much, and we'll be back in a few minutes. We'll begin in just a second soon as our clerk is back with us. Thank you. Oh, there she is, okay. We're going to go ahead and begin, or continue, the special meeting of Bloomington City Council. At this point, can I have a motion to come back into open session?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. And do we need a roll call on that one? Okay.
Alderman Bray?
Somebody's got to call Rebecca.
Alderman Bray, are you there with us?
Yes.
Oh, haven't dialed in yet. Okay, we could go ahead and start with others.
Alderman Mathie?
Here, yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Malamoye?
Yes.
Alderman Burgess?
Yes.
Alderman Painter?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Harmon? Mayor Renner.
Yes. And do we have Alderwoman Bray on the line? We're having a little bit of technical difficulties here. Alderwoman Bray, are you there?
This is Alderwoman Bray, thank you.
Okay, and we do want your vote on whether or not we can come back and do a regular session.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, motion carries, we're back into regular session, and we are on item number eight on the agenda, and that's discussion and direction related to update on the fiscal year 2019 big picture budget presented on January 22. So this is an update on that. And so there are some items involving cost recovery, fee increases, through fee increases as opposed to business registration program, beginning charging for parking for downtown, and some other issues that I'm going to let our distinguished interim city manager deal with, Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'd like to thank the council members also for giving us a lot of feedback on the things that we had talked about in the previous several meetings. I'd like to review the calendar here a little bit, and if you look at the line across the middle of the line, that's kind of where we are now and what has gone behind us. And if you remember, we went to the BCPA, we looked at the big picture, and then the last time we came back with a proposed balanced budget with you, with a number of items on there that require some hard decisions by the city council. And so today, I wanted to talk a little bit about what we call the proto-budget. That would be the prototype of a budget with some of the difficult issues that we're going to have to talk about. And just by way of review, I want to talk a little bit about the $2.9 million deficit. And as you recall, we talked about each of those at the council retreat on November 4. You gave us a number of items to look at, how we could close the deficit. Some of those things we looked at, and there just was no light at the end of that tunnel, but a number of them there were. And so we looked at these, and these numbers, which you have seen before, shows how we can close the $2.9 million deficit in the operating budget. One thing that I did want to point out is item number nine on this list, which is operating reductions. One thing that we had gotten from the council is that before we talk about doing some other fee increases, we want to make sure we've gone that and done some significant cutting. And so this item, I want to show you what you may have not seen before, and that is we went back to the departments and we looked at getting another half a million dollars out of the departments, which would help bring that $2.9 million deficit down. And you can see down at the bottom is some of those examples. Now, some of those things we may not want to do and we may do, but those will items that we will work towards getting, closing the gap. And as you can see, some of those things are things that you may not want to do. The clerk's office, we can delay a codification. We can, in finance, we can limit the amount of consulting services. There are a number of those things we can do in each department, and the budget officer and I continue to go through and look at the departments. So a number of this can get cut out by simply slimming down what we're doing in the departments. So before we go back to some other issues here, I do want to let you know that we have looked at that. Now, what I wanted to do here was to move on, on three items we're going to talk to you about here later, and I'm just giving you a preview of coming attractions, because I'm going to come back to those in a minute. One of the things we talked about was service fee increases, and we will come back to you on that and ask to see if someone would like to make a motion for us to review that. And in your packet, you will see a sample motion. We'll also come back and talk to you about business registration, and there's some issues back and forth on that, but we'd maybe like you to come back and make a motion for us to examine that. And the third thing then is a motion for some parking fee increases. Those three numbers amount to a good portion of the deficit, and we'll have some more to talk to you about on that. But what I wanted to do now is go back to the main issue for tonight, which is the solid waste issue. And I'm going to ask Jim Karch to come and present some options for that. And then after we've done that, that will kind of set a model for us here, because at the last meeting, you asked for us to come back for you to make a resolution for us to review this. And of course, you can look at that, discuss it, vote it up, vote it down, table it, but that idea of having a motion to come back is what we will come back on these other three items to do. And as you have proceeded with the solid waste, maybe we then can proceed with these other items, which would help us to close that deficit. So having said that, I'm going to ask Jim Karch to come up, and we have full time to talk about the solid waste issue, and then I'll come back to these three items and see how you might want to proceed in those. So Jim, if you're ready, I'll let you go ahead and come through the options here.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Rasmussen. Mayor and city council, I'm going to be pulling up a presentation. While I do, this is an ongoing conversation of what we discussed last week, last month, January 22. We brought to you a presentation on different possibilities of service level reductions. And so tonight, we were asked to bring back a resolution on the options and investigation of outsourcing of our solid waste services. And so first, to begin that conversation, let's talk about what we do internally. So when we talk about that, we actually already have some of our services contracted out with the city of Bloomington. You're going to see throughout this presentation, at the very bottom, you can see this chart, this little bar that we're trying to show, this difference between public, fully public, and fully private. And so this kind of allows us to have some, just really frame the conversation around how much are we public, how much are we private with our solid waste service. So to start off with, right now, we are very close to being fully public. There are some communities, though, that have their own landfill. There's some communities that process their own recycling material. They have their own composting facility. They do their own transfer of all of that. We already contract quite a bit of that out. You can see on the chart what we contract out and what we don't. But the key facet, I've had somebody even ask, is what do our, do our solid waste workers only do solid waste? And the answer is no. They do see, I know Renee Nessler had made some of those points, but just to reiterate that, that the solid waste work that is done, they do bulk brush, they do the garbage recycling, but there are also the leaf removal services done, snow removal services done, and then, you know, things like median cleanup, gravel alleys, and then also medical assistance. So when we talk about privatization, we do have to look at how would that work get done? Now, other communities we'll talk about, they do address that. They'll deal with it in different ways. I'll use the examples of Peoria. Whenever you talk about snow removal, they currently don't provide their own garbage and recycling, bulk service, all of that. How do they deal with it? Well, it can be done. They actually have a signatory agreement with another union. They can come in and provide some supplemental workforce to help out. But other places, like McLean County locally, they'll use snowbirds. I've used that term before, where they have farmers with CDLs or other employees that can come in and be able to provide that service. But the other impact are things like leaf collection, and that would have to be done by our existing workers of streets and sewers, and so that would pull away from some of that other work we do. Even if we use people like our parks, recreation, and cultural arts, that would have an impact on even the plowing of Constitution Trail, how we plow some of our own parking lots. So all of this can be done. This is just, it's important to know the full picture when we look at some of these decisions. This does also make a change, though, in when we talk about the library expanding and that impacted. So if they were to expand to the south, Public Works had to relocate, then we would look at a lessened facility. If we didn't, if we, in some way, did not provide the same service level, that would change the type of building needs that we have. But again, some of the things when we talk to a lot, whenever I've talked personally to a lot of the other communities, we'll hit this again, but I'll hit this now and later, is that there's not one best management practice out there. You know, some communities, like Pekin, they did go out, and it wasn't too long ago when they looked at trying, do we need to outsource this service? And they did bid for that. Peoria currently is going through the process right now. Their own employees bid on some of that work. And so there are a lot of communities that are looking at that as they deal with some of this shortfall. Pekin did choose to raise their fees. Peoria, in the same way, had tried to get some additional bids from other companies. And so a lot of them are going through this process. So let's look at this. This chart on the screen gives us some words to frame, again, frame this conversation, because we talk about, we throw out words like privatizing, outsourcing, contracting, franchising, and they mean different things. And so we want to make sure we have the same language that we're using. So when we talk about contracting out, let's focus on that for a second. That's on the left side of the screen, and you'll notice that's not fully private, and it's not fully public. Some communities, when we talk about, we'll show you a chart later, which breaks down how does that work. The city still does maintain quite a bit of control under a contracting situation. So they do, they are able to set the service level. They're able to work with customer service. They're able to require things such as medical assistance. And so they're able to include in that contract what services are provided, how they're provided. They can even control some of the costs, but then there might have to be subsidies that are provided. So the city maintains still quite a bit of control. That's why you'll see it's more right down the center. So communities such as Peoria do that. They'll contract that out. Now, we move to franchising, and that's more of a communities, you know, such as Decatur, where they've got different zones in the community that they franchise. Well, that's similar to what more of an Amarin or Corn Belt, how we do our electric service providers. So there is less control by the city. We'll know at times, as a community, we'll get concerns about a street light being out, and we'll talk about some of the limitations that we have on the control of when they're done and how those are done. So franchising does allow some constraints, but not to the level of contracting out. So that's where you can have multiple different companies that you franchise with in the same area. And so again, places like Decatur do that. Full divestiture is fully private. That is where the city no longer provides solid waste service at all. We sell all of the equipment. We sell all of the carts. We no longer provide the service, and there is no control that we have over concerns, complaints, or how that is done. The only controls we have is through our city code and enforcement and regulation of that. What we have understood the council to be talking about, just so that we can get on the same page, is contracting out. Our understanding from the staff of what the council has been asked for, we talked about that unanimous request to come back and look at that outsourcing, that's really more of that contracting out. So when we talk about that, that's what staff is of the understanding, so that's the clarification that's needed. The process that we would have to go through for that is, it would take us about 30 days to put together, we talked with procurement, 30 days to put together the contract documents to go out through the RFP process. And we would look at a myriad, we've already, through legal, started to get different communities, Galesburg and others, that we are getting their contracts. We can review those, and we can put that together within a 30-day period. It would take us then about 60 days to go out and actually get proposals from other vendors. You know, people that, you know, such as the Allied Waste Republic, you know, Waste Management, Peoria Disposal Company, Area. So there are different companies that would then put in the bid, you know, even like a Tom Kirk locally, others, that would put in that bid within that 60-day requirement. I know tonight it'd be great if I could come to you and provide you costs on what it would be, but we don't know that. You know, we don't know what we don't know, and until we would go through that process, we can't be able to really even project what those costs would be. So with that, we can go, I'll go on to these other two options that you have. You have two other resolutions before you tonight. One of them is through potential fee increases. We've looked at keeping that same, you can always keep the cart fee straight across the board for everybody. You can have a uniform cart fee, but if we kept that same structure that we've had, that low cost for folks as an option, and then continue to have other tiers, we can look at this next year increasing $4 for the largest cart, $4 for the middle cart, 65-gallon, $2 for the smallest cart. And that would take care of this next year's budget gap. That, in and of itself, would take care of the budget gap for the next year. That would address that $1.1 million. The following year, you would, we would implement one more series of increases before we had a set flat fee across the board annual. The reason for that is so that we can try to bring into line, if we kept the current service level, we would then be able to have the reserve that's needed, that we as a council have talked about and passed a resolution for. So this, this kind of a structure would really allow us, for the foreseeable future, to address that funding gap, because a 3% increase would probably address that. The other way we could look at that is some sort of incremental service change. We talked about that before. We've discussed everything from bulk changes. We've talked about even split shifts. There's a myriad of menu on the table for you to consider. But quite honestly, the biggies are the bulk. You know, there's, the bulk and brush are the majority of our costs, you know, with the solid waste service. It's a lot of cost with that. But those kind of service level changes also allow us to be able to address even things like landlord abuse, where there is times where how much that is put out there, the fact that that's more of a business. We can include some of that conversation in our bulk waste dialogue as well. The last thing I'd like to hit is this 20-year solid waste plan that the McLean County, the town of Normal, the city of Bloomington, has been participating in now for a year through various groups. This is that 20-year plan with the closure of the landfill. How does that plan, even though it's a draft, even though we'll be bringing it back to you in the second meeting in February, so we'll be bringing it back to you at the next council meeting? The draft plan, we've talked with the Ecology Action Center, and it does not specify or does not provide any recommendation on how the city provides the service that we talk about. So it can be done from an internal service providing or from an outside vendor. And so with that, we would just take any questions that you have, but I'd like to point out this chart up on the screen. The, the reason for this chart, it's hard to read, my apologies, it's in your packet, but the intent is to really show the wide variety. If you look in that third column, the contract structures, you know, there are people that have internally provide the service, Bloomington, Normal, Pekin. There are others that have open hauling, Champaign, Urbana. There's others with franchise, Decatur. There's still others that, again, have that contracting, like East Moline and Morton and Peoria. So the point is, is that every community looks different with how they provide their solid waste. Each community has to be able to figure out what works best for their area, how they bridge the gap of funding, and so that's part of the conversation. This is an individual community discussion that our council has to set that service level.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Karch? Alderwoman Schmidt?
Thank you. Appreciate having all this information pulled together. I will say, first of all, that I've had a lot of feedback from people, and I have to say, generally, people are very happy with the service they're getting from the city. And there's a lot of anxiety about turning that over to another provider and not being sure of the service level, not being sure of any kind of rate increases, so, you know, I think people do appreciate the work that our crews do. I do think that we need to do our due diligence in understanding what costs are. So are you saying that we could not understand a cost from a private hauler without actually bidding it out? Basically, we'd have to go through that process?
Yes, I am saying, I can't definitively tell the council what that cost would be. I would say that if you did go through that RFP process, that doesn't automatically outsource that work. You know, in the end, you might, as a council, say this is, you know, this work is done very well in-house, and we have that, we have that information. So that doesn't guarantee an outsourcing. And the other thing I will say is, we get a lot of compliments on our solid waste, just like you had said. We get high marks, we have a high service level, and we do a great job with what we do.
One item that we talked about maybe the last time was looking at bulk waste with landlords. And right now, that's sort of a free ride, I guess. I mean, you know, they're paying for it. If they have city service, then they can do the move-outs like anybody else, and if it's over certain buckets, you know, the whole thing. But I think that I'm hearing that there's some interest in trying to cost out something that is a business model for landlords, because we know through our rental inspection program who they are, you know? So is there a way to model what that might look like? So if I'm putting a coffee table out, you know, and I'm, you know, that's one thing, but if, but if I'm a landlord and that's my business, are we able to model that as a different source of revenue?
One of the ways we look at, a lot of that depends on the direction the council goes with bulk, because it would address itself if you did a spring and fall collection and a full cost recovery with anything outside of that. So that is one way that it's addressed. You can, as a council, change the model to which we bill bulk waste, for example. So anybody that uses it, everything that's put at the curb, many communities, you know, you have to pay for that. You know, if you look up here, you know, any, some of them regulate for every large item, for anything that's put out there, there's a cost for everything you put at the curb. So, you know, we could, that could disincentivize more of those, the frequent move-outs, and we could still change it to where you have it free at the drop-off. And so that, that can incentivize some, you know, some of that, not just loading up the curb, so to speak, and making that more that unclean kind of a feel.
And then my last question has to do with this 3% increase. Is that, is, I can't read the chart. Are we talking about that repeating year after year after year?
Yes. So what we'd be looking at, a lot of our costs, you know, moving forward on an annual basis, a lot of our material costs, you know, from a landfill perspective, from even a construction and demolition perspective, those costs, it's not like asphalt. Asphalt can go up, you know, 6% or sometimes more, you know, from a, from a material standpoint. In the solid waste industry, 3% actually is a fairly consistent and has been marker that our costs go up on an annual basis. So that did seem like a reasonable increase, and what that would do then, from an ongoing perspective, is it wouldn't make it so that after five years, we have to look at some sort of a drastic increase. It can be that small increase that we see year after year, once we get our costs in line. So that would be more of that staff recommendation.
I guess my comment on that would be that I don't see that that incentivizes us and our crews to continue to look for efficiencies. I'm thinking about my own work, I don't, you know, I have to suck up six, seven, eight percent in book and journal cost every year, nobody's giving that to me, I have to figure it out every year. And I'm assuming many businesses are like that, so I guess I'm looking for incentives for those efficiencies that help keep our prices affordable for our citizens.
What I will say is if we looked at a trend, I don't have this chart for you, but we actually have been decreasing some of our annual expenditures in the solid waste division. We've been really making efforts to try to reduce our costs, and so I'll give a lot of credit that we have been really trying to cut back and save on some of those costs.
Other questions, comments? Alderman Black.
Thank you, and thank you Jim and Steve and everybody for putting this together. These are the kind of conversations I've been looking forward to having for the last few years, because it produces all the information that we're seeking, and we have to make a policy decision about how we proceed. And I just, I don't know how the ultimate vote's going to go tonight, but I'll just say that, like Karen, I want to just echo the work that I've heard, the feedback from people saying that they've really enjoyed the service, good experiences with solid waste pickup and such, and I think that's a reflection on you and your staff, so thank you for that. I'm not going to be voting for any type of outsourcing or privatization at all, and I think it would, and I will be voting against any recommendation to come forward, and if the council were to proceed in that direction, I will still be voting no on that. I think there's an inherent value for our historic neighborhoods to have the city be accountable for the trash that gets out there, the bulk waste pickup, I mean, Bob has already met me with a couple of my emails this week, and I know you see my emails of bulk waste that's got to get picked up during cleanouts and et cetera. I think there's a definite value in a public good that comes from our city being accountable for taking care of that issue. Any type of proposal, if we do go down that path, I would need to see how these private companies deal with those sorts of problems. If you go back to the fee slide too, that we were looking at a minute ago with the cart amounts, yeah, thank you. So I know, I've heard a couple of numbers float around over the years, between twenty-five and thirty-five dollars is what the actual cost is, if you do the math on everything. And I know that we came up with this fee tiered schedule over the years, and that's what got the votes to pass. Moving forward, I really think that the thirty-five gallon cart, that's the smallest one, there should be an incentive for producing less trash, and I think that that should be offset by those who produce more trash. And I can already hear my Boca thinking, you know, like, oh, I got a big family, a lot of trash, it's not my fault, you know, as a single guy, I don't produce as much trash. But at some point in time, there needs to be a tie to less trash, less money, kind of like with your water bill, you don't like your water bill being so high, use less water. And so I would argue and advocate for, if we do any fee kind of structure, that the thirty-five gallon cart remains the same for those three years, and then those costs are offset in larger increases in the sixty-five and ninety-five. Somebody's dissatisfied with that, they can move, they can avail themselves of the smaller cart option and go from there. I know that we even offer no charge to decrease the cart size, and we also, we charge you to increase the cart size, so that makes sense to me. When it comes to bulk waste, I think that, for my support moving forward, we talk about fee and recovery of services, we got to figure out a way to really go after some of these landlords, specifically during apartment cleanouts, you know, how do we, you know, a hundred dollars a day, five hundred dollars a day, something that gets somebody's attention, or we just take landlords off of our solid waste program entirely. I hear call after call, especially during the fall timeframe, of move outs that are just literally everybody's possessions out on the street, and no ramifications whatsoever, I see TVs out there. These are the things that we should be going after, and I think that's easy cost recovery, and I'm sure we can come up with an ordinance to speak to those concerns. But I know that where I grew up, we didn't have this type of Cadillac service, people liked the Cadillac service, and that's fine, but I think people don't avail themselves of the bulky waste pickup as much as they think that they do. And so in my world, my best case scenario, you would have a fee, a charge, I don't know, twenty, thirty bucks, we could figure out bucket load or whatever from there, just discouraging people from throwing, you know, one-piece trash out, or, you know, one chair, because that's how we have our workplace comp issues, that's how we have those sorts of things, and if you want to do that, that's fine, but you're going to be charged for it. And then you can also bring it down to our collection site on yourself at your own expense to bring it there. And I hear a lot of concerns about illegal dumping and people just throwing it on the sides of the road, and I get calls about that every so often. I guess my theory would be that if you're willing to take it and throw it on the side of the road somewhere in the county, just take it down to the city dump and just do it for free. So that just makes sense to me, and you're always going to have that, you know, some people are jerks and just live their life that way, so. But at a high level, there is a benefit to us as a city taking ownership of how our neighborhoods look, especially in our historic core, to be able to address the trash issues as they happen. We can come up with a fair fee structure, it's going to, I think we need to increase the cost, I think the feedback I've gotten from folks is they're okay with that, so we come up with a fair way to equalize that out. I'm okay with the two times a year for free, and then we just do a charge for service outside of that. It's my opinion, I'll stop talking.
Alderman Milwaukwe, the big family.
Don't be a hater, Scott, you know you want a big family. Okay, well, Jim, thank you very much for the presentation, I learned quite a bit. One of the things that I've learned from your presentation, and also just through reading all the materials, is that it's very hard to compare, you know, the different communities, because the service level is different, the neighborhoods are different, the way they do pick up is different. So I, you know, with that said, you know, one of the things that was consistent in what I've heard from residents was the fact that they really liked the service. So I would echo what's been said, is that our service here is really top-notch. And so with that, I'm a little bit hesitant, you know, to change that balance. There are a number of things that people like about the city, about Bloomington. When I first came here, one of the first things that I noticed is that it was very clean, very neat. And I came from another city on the east coast, and I would not name that city, but it just did not have the same feel, okay? So I think, you know, we have to be very careful to tinker with the balance that we have. Another thing that I think people like in the community is the convenience. That's one of the things that makes living in Bloomington really a great thing, you know, very short distances to travel, a lot of convenience, you know, you put your stuff out and it's picked up, you know, the next day. And if it's not, you know, if we so happen to miss it, you know, the next day, somebody comes back and gets it, you know, once we make a call. Another one of the conveniences, you know, you and I have been communicating with a, one of my residents who happens to be, has limited mobility, and that's one of the things that we also do for residents in the city. So, you know, so it's clear that people really like the service, and I would not want to tinker with that. That said, I think I would echo what Karen has said in terms of efficiencies, you know, so we always have to, and I'm glad to hear you say that the staff is, you know, making strides to be a little bit more efficient. You know, one of the things, you know, of course, with bulk being one of the, you know, the big items that we have to deal with, that, you know, I would look for us to be a little bit more efficient in that area. I think you and I have talked about, you know, on-demand pickup, but also route optimization as well, as a possibility. But also talking about education, you know, educating the public of what constitutes bulk. You know, it wasn't until, you know, after about a couple of years that I, you know, in talking with the staff, I realized that, you know, for some people, people didn't realize that bulk is simply anything that you just can't fit in your trash can. And, you know, if you break things down, those things can fit in your trash can. And I do believe, you know, just driving around, I can see people just putting really small items, you know, on the side of the road, or, you know, in the parkway for us to pick up, you know, when the staff doesn't necessarily need to do that, it could go in the trash can. So I would look for more education in that area. I like the idea of, you know, building a reserve, you know, I think that is something that would allow us to address capital needs in the future, so we have to think about that, so that we're not always in emergency mode, you know, of trying to figure out, what do we do next year, you know, to replace some of our equipment and things like that. But that said, I also worry about the fact that, you know, if we have something that's set at three percent and it comes back every year, the same thing, you know, I would like to see a mechanism for us to continue to look for improvements, as opposed to, you know, kind of being complacent and just, you know, collecting the money and just keeping doing things as we usually do. So those are just my initial thoughts, thank you.
And that is something that was put up on the board, certainly one of the options in terms of fee increases could just be, the fee increases over the next two years, that then the council continues to revisit, and of course, the council could always nix that, just FYI. I'm not sure what order, who had lights on, but Alderman Sage and then Burgess.
Amelia, you can go first, that's okay.
First, I have a question, are we now in the discussion portion, or are we still in the question?
No, no, we have a long, I'm sorry, you went over budget on your time, but, so we are, we are well into the time of discussion.
Okay, just to make sure it was in order. First, I just thank you for the presentation, I really appreciate the amount of information that you provided to us and the public about the different options facing the city. And I think what's interesting here is that we're not doing something new or novel, so the amount of information out there that's publicly available to review is actually quite extensive, and I've appreciated that in this issue, because we don't always have that luxury of information. So I think that there may be an inclination, because I've heard this from some residents, and I'm sympathetic to it, because I think we need to do our due diligence and make the best decision possible, I think there's some inclination to say, well, we don't know what we don't know, if we don't bid it out, we won't know exactly what the answers are that we will get if we were to bid it out. And I'm sympathetic to that, however, I'm not supportive of that particular line of thinking, because I do think we have enough information to tell us the key questions here, which is, are we guaranteed, if we privatize the service, to maintain the same level of service that we enjoy, which everyone, I think, has agreed that the city offers to it, you know, exceptionally high degree, for the most effective cost for the residents? And based on the information I've reviewed, I think there's a very real risk over time, our residents, if we were to fully privatize, would get less for what they pay, they would get less and pay more. And again, that's based on the information I've seen, so I would prefer to not see us go down a road where we're looking for more information, where we can at this point in time say, no, it's not necessary, we have everything we need in front of us to make a well-informed decision. So I'm with Scott, I'm highly skeptical of privatization, and think that our time is better spent with staff, working for a way to meet the goals of what council previously voted for, which is to turn this into an enterprise fund. And, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, it's interesting to look back, you know, was that the right decision, the wrong one, because some municipalities do subsidize to a high degree, I don't know, but I think when we're facing a budget deficit, we have to just move forward the best we can, and this is one way we can do that. So I think I would support, and I think this is what I've kind of heard from Scott, is kind of a hybrid approach on number, the proposed motions, number two and three, that some increase in cost will be necessary, but also that there are some efficiencies in services that can still be gained, and I'd be curious to see where that goes, if we were to say to you, let's look for a hybrid solution to this issue that we're facing. Because I do agree that when it comes to the services we provide, bulk more than anything is a premium level of service, and one that I think is reasonable to say to residents, you're going to have to pay something for this premium level of service that you're getting. Because we've heard these concerns, and I'm guessing, I don't know if you have the data, but I'm guessing that some smaller percentage of residents in the city use substantially or disproportionately higher amount of the bulk waste services, and so the rest of us are subsidizing that premium that they enjoy. I don't think I've ever used bulk waste, honestly, but I like that we could, and I think that that's consistent with what I hear from a lot of residents. So I don't know if we're ready for motions yet, or, let's have more discussion first.
Yeah, let's hear Alderman Sage, Matthew, and Painter.
And so, this is Bray, I'd like to bring in as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Alderman Sage.
Thank you. Great presentation, Jim. And just a reaction to some comments that have previously been made, for me, we finally have some information now that I think helps us make more meaningful decisions. We've always had information, what I start to see in the handout tonight is converting that to knowledge, and when I look at some of the information about some of the other municipalities, what I see is, it seems entirely premature to say, you know, we have risk here, we're going to have a reduction in service, we'll have no accountability over the solid waste program. To suggest otherwise just doesn't seem consistent in my mind. And so, and again, I think as others have said, we do have a tremendous solid waste program, but we also have a situation where we're going to have to take a hard look at the services that we deliver, and that's why I would be in favor of an RFP, so that we can make, we truly have the knowledge in order to make an informed decision. Again, to draw conclusions before we have an RFP seems to me to be a willingness to try to create kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy. We have the RFP where we can begin to make apples-to-apples comparisons, then we have, again, the knowledge that I think is needed. The other thing that I'm reminded of is that I think it can be often easy for us to kind of gloss over the reality that so many people in our community have, where we start to talk about another four or five dollars a month here, four or five dollars a month there, these are folks who consistently have, as my mom used to say, more month than money. And so to, again, kind of, I said gloss over that and pretend like that doesn't have some real-world effects, I know that there are folks, a number of folks that I know and work with, they haven't had a raise in a number of years. Everything else has continued to increase, they've not had a raise. And I'm not sure that's the same for those of us who sit around this platform up here. So I guess I'd like for us to have, if we don't have the willingness to look at, let me step back, if we don't have the courage to look at the ways that we deliver city services, and try to investigate those, and figure out if there are meaningful ways to reduce those costs, the trajectory that we're on is such that we'll have little hope of getting to a point where we can actually manage cost. And again, I always appreciate Scott's comments. You know, Scott, I know people, I know you hear that the people would be concerned about that, about changes with that. I know, when I talk to people and I say, there could be the possibility that your costs would go down, I promise you, they'd be real interested in hearing about it then, you know. So again, of the three motions presented, I would probably be in favor of what I believe is motion number one, two, at least, I'm not suggesting, Amelia, you used the word privatized, that's the difference between, I'm not suggesting privatization, I think we need to remain, retain some level of control, which should suggest more the outsourcing or the franchising, I think maybe is the term that you use, Jim. But regardless, we won't know until we do additional due diligence to find out actually what the cost versus service, what the return on that investment might be. So, so again, in a second, I would, you know, favor motion one, thank you.
Alderman, Matthew.
I actually think David summed up my thoughts pretty much.
I was rounding up your notes, James.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I didn't have to enunciate that way. No, I think it's still too premature at this point to rule out anything, because we, while we know what other cities have done, we don't know what is going to be available to us. And if anything, you know, it caught my attention when you're looking at Decatur on the chart, that Decatur actually pays less than we do for what looks to be a very similar sort of service. So I think that there's a lot of options that could be out there, and I would be in support of option number one as well.
Alderman, Painter, and then Bray, and then we're going to have to wrap up, because we're behind schedule.
Well, thank you very much, Jim, for the presentation, there was a lot of information there. I have several thoughts about this. The choice that we were given about cart size, I would not be in favor of that, I think that if we are going to capture what we need, I think that everybody should be paying the same thing, no matter what their cart size is, because I know in my neighborhood, I see carts, little carts stuffed to the brim and overflowing all the time, and they can afford a large cart, they just don't want to pay that. So I think that I'd like to see that tweaked, and get it to where we wouldn't have to revisit this every two years, because that's what we're having to do. I don't know how much that would be, would it be thirty dollars?
Actually, right around twenty-six dollars. If we were to do a flat cart fee across the board, our calculations are right around twenty-six dollars.
And how long would that last?
Well, I mean, it goes up, it would go up every year again by that, you know, we see our costs, our material costs, a lot of that increase. our costs, our material costs, a lot of that increase, on average, about 3% a year.
Well, that doesn't sound acceptable. I would like to see some of the efficiencies that we ask for in the garbage department actually come to pass. I know that we have, in the past, got supervisors to help them do things in a more efficient manner, and they have left. And they're back to doing things the way they did before. And I'm not seeing any inclination on their parts to do things in a more efficient way. And that's one thing that I would like to get worked out before we go forward with this. And also, I think that it would be irresponsible of us not to find out what other private companies would charge. Although, I think it may be a moot point because our mayor promised to veto anything that we decided on if it was privatized. So I don't know why we'd even bother doing that. Anyway, I'm really up in the air about this, so I'm still thinking about it. Thanks.
Okay, before we go, just to clarify, the council can override a mayor's veto with a 2/3 majority. It's a mayor saying that they will veto is, I don't see it as any different from saying how a council member would vote. I'm just expressing an opinion. It's what I ran on in '09, in '13, and '17. It'd be really, really, really bad, and I'm happy to explain why. I've been studying this stuff for 35 years. It depends on the size of the community and all kinds of other things. So I'm happy to talk about why I have that position and have held it, and have held it since the 1980s. Alvin, Bray, you're there?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Your last but not least.
Okay, thank you for that. And thank you to Public Works Director Jim Karch for all this great material that was presented. And I also appreciate all the commentary and the honest thought and input from all my colleagues there on the city council. I've heard a lot from my constituents on this particular piece, and like those that have spoken before me, they enjoy the service level, and they say, if possible, keep this in-house because we keep control over it and we're able then to adjust and control what services and what fees are then asked for in order to continue to deliver good services. I really think that everyone benefits when we have good solid waste and bulky waste removals. And while there may be some who don't partake of bulky waste removals with any regularity, really, the whole community benefits whether or not you actually are a person that uses that service. And I think everyone recognizes that. Because if bulky waste is allowed to mow your, on our sidewalks, or in our furbs and in our streets, everyone is affected, whether or not you were the person that placed it there or not. So with all that said, I really favor a combo of motion two and three. I'd like for us to approach this remaining in-house, and I'd like us to study up some of Jim's recommendations here about cart increase costs. And I do like the idea of an annual increase so that we're not constantly revisiting this issue, so that this continues to be a viable and ongoing concern, as we've heard from our, as I've heard from my constituents. And then I'd also like to, you know, make sure that we're always staying as efficient as possible. So that's my input. Thank you.
Okay. And just to be clear, obviously, the city council, at any point, even if the city council said, hey, okay, we're going to reach, let's say, the, I forgot the exact dollar amounts that you were saying, but they were $2 to $4 a cart, even if the city council said that, and then said, well, in the future, we may do 3%, that doesn't mean that it's going to happen. The city council, every year, has to pass a budget. So the city council can say, all right, none of 3% this year is not acceptable, whatever, just to clarify that as an option. At this point, since we are way over, and at this point, our projected starting point is well after 7 o'clock for the next meeting, I'm going to go turn to Alvin Bergus, who I think was about to make a motion, and you want to make a comment, too.
Just a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we instruct city staff to move forward on an ordinance meeting chapter 21 of the city code that is a hybrid between motions two and three in today's agenda.
Hybrid between motions, there are, I think, several people who have recommended that. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Alvin, Bray.
I would not be clear what the motion is, then. I mean, because...
Oh, I would ask her, the maker, to clarify.
I think the intent here is to say to staff, we would like some hybridization between these two proposals, so some service changes for greater efficiency, as well as perhaps some revenue enhancements. I don't know what that would look like necessarily, but to bring us their best option based on the conversation we've received. Does that help clarify at all?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Amelia. So, but the constraint then, or the limitation would be, staff would not be looking outside at all for any other options outside from an outsourcing perspective? Is that correct?
Correct. Just motions two and three.
Okay.
Okay. All right, at this point, we have a motion on the floor, and there is a second, and it would be a hybrid motion, presumably could include, I'd heard something like, maybe only picking up bulk twice a year and/or...
We don't have those parameters. We cannot talk about it in this term. The motion says...
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry, I think you can certainly clarify it in just a second. Those were items that were thrown out as possibilities for reducing expenses. Alvin Sage.
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize. I should have let you finish. The motion doesn't go with any suggested options, characteristics, or anything. It is simply to say that staff would come back with some recommended package, some hybrid.
Right, right. And I apologize if that was to suggest that. I was mainly trying to say such, I'd heard a few of these kind of items. Whatever those items are, those would be items that would be consistent with items two and three. Now, at this point, we have a motion on the floor, and if you would go ahead and vote on that motion, if that one fails, I'm entertaining, I'll be happy to entertain another. Alvin, Bray?
I vote yes.
Yes, okay. So the motion passes five to three, there are no, excuse me, there are three nays, I apologize, Madam Kirk, to announce.
Alvin, Matthew, Alvin Sage, and Alvin Schmidt.
Okay. All right, we move on, and thank you to our staff on that. We move on next to discussion regarding, excuse me, I'm on the next thing, okay.
Yes, I'll come back now to the other three issues.
Yep, I'm sorry. Just got my glasses back to focus.
Good. Thank you very much, Council. We have the guidance now that we need to come back the next time. What I wanted to do now was I want to go back to the schedule we've got here. And what happens is, if you see this schedule, you will see that on the 26th, the next council meeting from now, we'll bring back to you a budget which will propose these things that we have from guidance from you that will give us a balanced budget that you can look at. Now, what that will be is that will be a 10- or a 12-page summary of a balanced budget, and then you can adjust things from that. What we'd also propose is that at the Committee of the Whole, next Monday, on the 19th, we bring back to you the issues concerning the capital improvement program, which we have not talked about, and there are several big-dollar items and the way to pay for that. We're proposing doing that at the Committee of the Whole. The calendar keeps marching on, and as you can see, what we have there in red on March 19th is the day that we would have the proposed budget books available. That means after the 26th, next council meeting, I would have the staff go ahead and put those draft budget books together because they will need time to print those. I've put on the calendar in parentheses a proposed work session on March 10th. So when we have those books, if the council would like to talk some more about those, we can, because we have a public hearing scheduled for March 12th. And of course, the next thing is the March 15th, is we have the legal deadline for those proposed books to be put out. So we still have until the end of April to adopt it, but the time is marching on in terms of the staff being able to prepare those full-budget books for you, which we would like to have ready for you by Friday, March 9th. So that's why I say that next council meeting on February 26th, we'll bring back to you a proposed budget based on your guidance tonight, between now and then, and what we have at the Committee of the Whole. Now, that brings up these other three major items, and it was very good that we got a motion to move forward. Now we know what to do and what not to do. I said I would come back to you, though, with the next ones here, because if you recall, up there, we have three big items still remaining to be discussed, and I wanted to go through those, and they are these. The first one is a cost recovery. These are service fee increases. And at the retreat on November 4th, you asked us to come back and look at that. And we can recover a number of those fees. Some of these fees have not been increased since 1996, and we would propose coming back to you, not with a large increase initially, but at least a small portion to bring those up, and then to have an ordinance that would allow us to increase those on a regular basis. And they would be tied to something, perhaps the CIP, or maybe it would be maybe tied to the amount that we increase our union wages. But it would be tied to something that would move it along so that our fee increases would keep commensurate with the expenditures we've got. Now, the reason I ask for this as a motion to move forward on it is because if the council would say, no, we don't want anything to do with that, well, we won't spend our time doing that. But if you are interested in having us look at that, we will do the same thing that we did with solid waste, and that is, you can give us a motion to move forward and to come back to some, with you, with something that would address this issue. And so if you would notice in your council packet, we proposed several motions that could do that. And for this one, the first one, is a motion to come back to increase various fees associated with service, city services, to allow for cost recovery and bring it back to the council for council action within three months. If you would like us to do that, we would do that, and we would ask for some guidance from you. And of course, the best way to get the guidance is for somebody to make a motion, you take a vote. Then we've got it, like we had with solid waste. And so I'm going to ask for some guidance from you, and if you would like to discuss this, make a motion to that effect, or not make a motion, we stand ready to accept what guidance you may have in a service fee increase program.
Okay. Alvin. Alvin Medelwampwe.
Just a quick question, Steve. Can you remind us the types of fees that are included in this?
Sure, sure. The vast majority of these come in community development. For example, fees for doing inspections, apartment inspection, rental inspections, fees for doing plan reviews, and those sorts of things. I'd remind you that in 1996 or so, we recovered about 85% of the cost of doing business in community development. Now we recover about 40%, and that is because, as the years have gone by, we have not increased any fees commensurate with our cost of doing business. And so what we would propose in this is that we have a reset on some of the fees, not a great amount, but a small amount, to bring them up to where they should be now, and then some kind of a proposal where we can automatically increase those year after year so that we do not get tied up with other things, and the years go by and we continue to get behind like we are now.
Alvin Bergus.
Just a question, to make sure I understand correctly. So this motion would be for an ordinance. I assume those fees that would be increased, or you would propose increasing, would be itemized, so we'd be able to review all the programs and the potential increases?
Absolutely, and we have that now, and I will ask Community Development to pass that out to you here, not tonight, but in the next day or two, so you can see it. It's lengthy. I mean, there are hundreds and hundreds of different fees that are included in that. And it has other things, like there are fees in the fire department for false alarms and those kind of things that would be included in that so that we could begin to recover some of the costs of doing business, which we increase every year with our union contracts.
Okay. Alvin, Matthew, Sage, and then we'll come this way.
I'm just ready to make a motion, if that's acceptable.
It could be, but that means we still have, we're going to still have discussion.
Yeah. I would just make the motion that we proceed with, or give staff the instructions that we want them to bring back an itemized list of what these fees might be.
Is there a second to that motion? Second, okay. And did you want to add any comments to that?
Just in some of the conversations I've had, you know, with our planning department, that some of the fees there are so outlandishly out of date that it's almost laughable. You know, Bob, in one discussion, we were talking about the review of, I think we were talking about plat review and things of that nature, that our fee for that, it was like $100, and yet, that in no way, shape, or form even comes close to the number of man-hours it takes to actually move something through all the various phases and review portions of that. So I think that there is justification for adjusting some of these fees and modernizing them, and, you know, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Alvin Sage, and then we'll come this way.
If I could add just one thing to that, one of the things that will allow us to do here is we could then build this into the budget so that we know that there would be some fee increases. We don't know what they might be, but as we get closer and closer, we could build some money into the budget so that we help offset that. And that's really what we're looking for, if you're willing to move in that direction.
Alvin Sage.
Thank you. So Steve, from a big-picture perspective, I want to make sure that I'm clear. With solid waste now off the table, we're really not, in this budget, looking for any particular permanent savings, any change in delivery of city services, anything that has a long-term reduction in cost. Now, I think you showed a slide here at the beginning that showed somewhere maybe in the neighborhood of half a million dollars in, but that's just, those are like, that's like an avoidance for this year, right? I mean, those things on there are still going to have to be done. We're just going to kind of not do them this year. I mean, basically, I mean, we're going to have to do them eventually.
Well, yes, we will continue with the service. We'll continue to do the services. It isn't like the services are going away.
Yeah, yeah. So that's my point, that we're not fundamentally kind of changing the trajectory of the budget now by looking at any other service reductions in order to achieve savings.
Correct. In this item, in service fee increases, what we're trying to do is to recover the cost of doing business.
Sure.
We're not changing the level of service.
Oh, I understand. I just, again, I want to make sure that I have proper context on the big picture here. So we're basically done talking about, potentially, within the big picture of the budget here, we're done talking about changing any cost trajectory with any of the services that we have, in terms of changing the way we deliver those or finding different ways to do them. We're simply going to say that all of the services that we do right now, the conversation around this motion and around this particular item is, we're going to charge more in order to recover more of the cost of those services that we currently do, without talking about whether or not we want to just continue doing any services. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And what you said just a minute ago about solid waste being off the table, that was an important consideration because what happens is, by you saying you did not want to pursue some outsourcing option in option number one, that's good information for us because now the staff is not going to move in that direction. We will move in the other direction, which is the hybrid of the two things. And that's the same thing that we're doing here. If you say you don't want to look at this, we won't pay any attention to that. We'll move in some other direction. But if you'd like to do this, we'll come back and we'll make some proposals to you that will propose fees that will approach, more or less, our cost of doing business.
And so let me wrap up by saying, Steve, I appreciate, I think I said this last time, I appreciate the way that you are bringing these items to the council, because these are council-owned items.
They are, yes.
This is the heavy bucket, right, of governing, right? So I appreciate you doing that. And for me, what I have to do is, as I listen to some other conversation and think about this larger process, is philosophically, am I ready to sign off on saying, we're done talking about not changing any of the other services that we do, perhaps eliminating some services? We're now fully in this mode of, we're simply going to raise fees to continue doing what we've always done. So again, but I appreciate the work done here.
Yes, thank you. And you said at the town hall meeting that we had the other night, that the time is coming where we're going to have to make some hard decisions, and so if it would appear to you like I'm trying to ask you to make some hard decisions, that's the right appearance. like I'm trying to ask you to make some hard decisions, that's the right appearance that you're getting.
But I think just, I think if I can try to summarize, I think where Alderman Sage is coming from, I think Alderman Sage is going back to 1,000 feet, or whatever metaphor you want to use, and that is, we have not necessarily ruled out other budget cuts, have we?
Oh, no, not at all, nor have we refused out continuing to do efficiencies. We'll keep working on that.
Well, thanks for that clarification. Where are the proposed budget cuts, then, that we will also consider as part of FY19?
Yes.
I mean, I saw the list of the $500,000.
Yes.
But those aren't really cuts. Those are just, we're just avoiding that. We're going to delay, we're not going to put them in the budget this year, but I think, I looked over that list. I mean, those are, I mean, eventually, the clerk's office is going to have to to go forward with, you know, with some codification effort. I mean, those types of things. The IT department is still going to have to do maintenance and repair. So that's more window dressing. That's that's just something that we're going to, we've kind of put up there to say, but it's not going to fundamentally change the trajectory of our budget going forward.
Yes, that's correct. For example, in the slide that you see up here in cost recovery fees, we're looking at $225,000. Well, most of that comes in community development. I'll go back to Bob, and I'll say, can we get $225,000 after we come back to you with it? Well, we may not get exactly that amount, and so maybe we'll have to delay the clerk's codification. But maybe we might be able to get a little more than that when he pursues it back to you, and so then we can put some of that codification into the clerk's budget. We'll do that as we get closer. But right now, what we're seeking is guidance from you, if you would like to pursue this as one of the options.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, as we're moving through the budget, if there are specific services that you that any council members think that we should just abandon or get rid of or cut dramatically, obviously, that's what we that's what this is all for. Now, I think we're we're cutting several dozen more positions on top of roughly the 100 that we lost already. So I think there are some cuts in terms of positions, too. Is that correct, Mr.?
Well, yes, and I have gotten some information back from a number of councilmen. Some people would like to look at cost savings by leaving positions unfilled. Some would would like to not do that, because of course, every time you leave a position unfilled, that means that's that work that doesn't get done. So we will look at each one of those very, very carefully and to see what the cost of of not filling that position is. And but but we're we are going to look at trying to do that $500,000 worth of cost savings by vacancy savings, and sometimes it's just delaying of filling a position.
The Alderwoman Schmidt, and then Black.
A corollary question that I don't expect to be answered tonight, but if we're increasing fees, many of which are in community development, it would be good to have an update on the one-stop shop?
Yes.
I would, I'm sure people would appreciate if we're asking them to pay more money, that they would be getting greater efficiencies from us.
Yes, and you know, that's a very good question, because we have stopped, we have started doing some of those things, and I will give you a good example. We used to have people come over to the clerk's office to do their registration of plats. Instead of doing that now, we do it over at the government center, and so we can have community development and public works at the same place instead of running people back and forth. Now, one of the things that goes along with that, if we go back to community development and say, well, one of the positions we're not going to fill is somebody who is reviewing those, well, that then slows down the plan reviews as well. So it's tough to do to both do it better with less people, but we'll balance that out, and we'll look at each one of those in an effort to keep the service level high and still gain some vacancy savings, and that will be a continuous challenge.
Alderman Black.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. So it's very easy to step here and just say, we're going to vote for this, and we'll increase fees. But I really enjoyed Melissa's priority-based budgeting that she sends out, I don't know where she's at, somewhere back there. So when these do come back, there she is, thank you, Melissa. Those documents are very helpful in tying what we're doing and how we're doing it, and then, more importantly, why we're doing it. And so I can sit here, and I'm going to vote for this, because we'll take a look at it. But I can imagine, if I'm looking at my crystal ball, we see a proposal a month from now, two months from now, to increase fees, and one group of people is very upset because it's going from $100 to $200, and then we're very concerned about what that looks like. Do we have the courage to make that decision? And I want to see when we have these come back, any of these fee increases, some tied to priority-based budgeting. Why are we doing these services? Should we be even doing them anymore? There's no greater threat to an organization than just saying, we've always done it this way. Can we be implementing technologies that tie to state mandates, is it a federal mandate? Is it something that we've created? That would be a better way of having that conversation, and I know it's probably going to fall on community development a lot, but I mean, that's something that we have a lot of the data already for, but if we can combine that as far of part of our final decision, I think that would be helpful to us and helpful to the public for that overall conversation.
Yes, exactly. And what we're doing here is not proposing that we go back and look at every individual fee right now. We're going to change this fee from $75 to $80. What we'll do is generally, we're talking about looking at the whole thing, and some will increase and some we won't, and you'll have an opportunity to see every one of those and decide if some of them may not make any sense.
Okay.
And just one more thing here. We've talked ad nauseam about the the false alarm piece, and if we're going to be charging more people for that, more money for it, we need to better define what that looks like. Somebody rattling a window, and the cops show up, and then there's nobody there, is that truly a false alarm? There's no way to tell that.
That's right.
The concern I have on the back end with this is that we got to either clarify what we're talking about, and if we tie it to that priority-based budgeting, now we're seeing where we're having that line of sight from the ordinance to why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay. Alderwoman Bray, any comments? Kim?
Yes, I'm here, just playing with the mute there.
Oh, okay.
No, thank you very much. I appreciate the comment. I'm ready to vote.
Okay, excellent, because we're not going to be able to spend this kind of time on the other ones unless we want to go ahead and postpone this till the next meeting. At this point, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
No.
Oh, we can, we don't need it. Sorry, we don't need that. If you will, just go ahead and press your I button or nay button. And Alderwoman Ray, how do you vote on this?
I'm an I, a yes vote.
Okay. There's only one nay to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Sage.
Okay. All right. Next, we go to the next item, and I will return that back to you again. We, just to, in the interest of time, if we really do need more time, for example, for item three, then I think we need to postpone that, because we do have a regular meeting that's going to start, supposed to start in 22 minutes, and we have to make every effort to make that happen.
We could move quickly through these two. The other one, the second one, was a business registration program, and again, this would be asking us to come back with a proposed ordinance. Of course, what you could do is you don't have to enact it. It would just tell us that we should not waste our time moving forward on that. And the same thing is, the second one is the parking, and that is increasing the parking fees for events, once we have an automated parking deck set forward.
Okay. Wonder if we could have questions of Mr. Resmussen on either one of these two. We'll take these in separate motions, of course. Alderwoman Schmidt.
Just a clarification about business registration. When we talked about this the last time, I think there was some lack of clarity about whether this was simply the registration, and then that's it, or it's an annual fee, and I heard some reluctance. I'm speaking for Alderman Howman now. I know she, I shared her concern that it not be, you know, that we try to limit our cost of businesses. So what are you actually proposing here?
Sure. What we would propose is a is a one-time business registration system, and there would be a fee associated with that, but of course, it would be tied to public safety and to building inspections. And then, once we've done that the first time, at least we have we have set that in motion, and then after that, the council could consider if we wanted to raise that fees on a regular basis or not, and we could bring that back to you with with options to take a look at.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Alderwoman Bray, any comments on these?
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the business registration program of that one.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
A second, Mayor.
A second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion on the business registration? Again, this is not approving it, it's just giving staff direction to move forward. Okay? Okay. And Alderwoman Bray, how do you vote on that?
I, yes.
Okay. The motion carries six to two. There are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Mathie and Alderman Black.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then the last item, any questions, comments, or emotion on that last item?
I would like to just make one quick comment on that, and that is, we will have the automatic parking deck system in place in the summer, maybe by August, so this would be kind of partway through the year. And what that allows us to do is to charge parking all the time, or we could charge it for events. We talked about charging it full-time, and that may gain $400,000 a year. There are a number of people who thought maybe we would not be supporting downtown development and evening activities by charging it all the time. So we went back, we talked about maybe just doing it for major events, like events at the arena, and that would bring it back to kind of about $200,000. But what we have is the ability here is to go in and charge for events that we want to, and we can bring that back to you and say, these things we thought we would charge, and this will be a $10 fee or a $5 fee, or not, but we have the ability to do that, and so that amount can fluctuate as to how much money we think is reasonable versus how much we want to contribute to downtown activities.
Okay. Questions or emotion? Alderwoman Bray, do you have any questions or emotion?
No, thank you.
No support for, or is this dying for, okay, Alderman Sage.
I'm not going to make a motion, but I am going to ask a question. I know I indicated in some feedback I gave to staff that I would appreciate, and again, being conscious of the time, I don't want a long conversation. I'm just interested in perhaps Aldermen who have, who I would consider to have a greater familiarity and expertise with downtown parking, you know, maybe some thoughts or comments, ideas they might have about that. And I mean, I know there are Aldermen who represent that area. I mean, I know there are Aldermen who work downtown. I'm just curious, and very much in abbreviated fashion, just some some feedback or comments on that.
Okay, well, I think we could start with our downtown businessmen. Alderman Mathie.
So I would be interested in looking at some possible options on this one, mostly tied to events. I personally happen to be a person who likes to go to a lot of concerts in various towns, and so every time we go to a concert, pretty much anywhere from Springfield to Chicago, there's a parking fee. It's just part of what you end up paying for. You go to Tinley Park to see Jimmy Buffett, you're paying a parking fee. So I would be interested in looking at that. I would not be interested in talking about 24/7 parking fees for the garage, and my number one reason for that is that, right now, the garages are free in the evenings and on the weekends, and it's very easy to encourage people who might be imbibing to put your car in the garage, leave it there, Uber, Lyft, taxi home, and be safe at night, but people might make bad decisions if they thought that they were going to have to pay for, you know, that entire fee until they came back. So that's that's my reasoning why I would not be interested in looking any sort of 24/7 operation of the garages.
Okay. Alderwoman Burgess.
Yes, I'm not going to repeat what you just said, because I agree with much of what you said. So the proposed motion for today that was just special events, is that correct? That hasn't been amended?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, then, that that we ask staff pursuant to the draft, the suggested motion, to bring back a proposed resolution for charging for special events only. Although I will say, personally, I'd like to see some options in that as well. I'm not sure $10 per event is the right number, so I'd like to see some rationale or justification for that, which I'm sure the staff has and can provide.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, and then I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, yeah, we're not done with comments. Yeah, absolutely. Seconded by Alderwoman Schmidt, and Alderwoman Schmidt has the floor, and then Alderman Black.
Just want to tag on with what Jamie was saying, and I also, I don't want, I want to incentivize continuing to grow downtown activity, and I think it needs to be in alignment with the Downtown Task Force report, with what Tricia Stiller's team is doing, and, you know, so, okay, fine, we look at special events, but I don't want to, I want to make sure we're maintaining some flexibility so that we're able to grow the events that we need to grow.
Sure. Yes, and what we'll do is, when we bring this back to you as as an actual resolution, we'll include all of that, and we'll have an opportunity for a more robust debate.
Okay. Alderman Black.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to be voting against this motion, and I'll walk you through why. I think for the downtown special events, we need to have more of them first before we start charging people for them. So once we grow them, we can revisit this in a year. And then, number two, part of what Jamie was talking about, that 24/7, I will vigorously oppose any type of overnight fee parking charge for that, because we need to be encouraging people to make smart, responsible decisions downtown and not discouraging them by having them go out there and try to get behind the wheel and make some very bad choices and very dangerous choices.
And again, just to clarify, this is just for special events. That was the nature of the motion. Yes, I, Alderwoman Bray, any comments? Kim? Hello? Alderwoman Bray?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, the mute is not acting very well.
Okay, no, that's fine. We love technology.
Yeah, yeah. No further comments, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All right. So obviously, an I vote is in favor of this, and a nay vote is in opposition to the motion as made by Alderwoman Burgess. And Alderwoman Bray, how do you vote on this?
I'm an I vote.
I vote, okay, thank you. The motion carries six to two. There are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Mathie and Alderman Black.
Okay. All right. Wow, we got it together in the fourth quarter, didn't we?
Well, thank you very much, and as you know, what I'm trying to do is find $2.9 million, and you've helped me a lot in moving in that direction. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you so much. We are going to our last action item of this meeting, and that is item 10, consideration of consulting services agreement in the amount of $20,000 with GovHR for city manager recruitment services. And we have a brief presentation by Nicole Albertson, and Nicole, I ask you to be as brief as possible, because we totally have 30 minutes or 20 minutes budgeted, and we don't have 20 minutes left. But Nicole, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, you bet. Thank you. So I will, in interest of time, we will shorten this up a little bit, but I do want to tee it up and remind you that back in October, we sought direction from you to move forward with an RFP process for an executive search firm for the city manager position. You gave direction that you wanted us to do that, so a total of 76 RFP packets were mailed out. We received a total of three fully responsive packets back, and we put together a selection committee that independently reviewed each of the responses. We collectively reviewed them through a structured evaluation process, including an interview with each of the vendors, and we reviewed the not-to-exceed cost from all three responses that ranged in cost from $20,000 from the least expensive up to $26,500 as the most expensive. So based on the evaluation process and the independent reviews, we unanimously recommend GovHR as the executive search firm to move forward with. And in the interest of time, I'm going to stop there and introduce you to Heidi Voorhees, who is with GovHR USA, and she's going to share some details with you on the process.
Ms. Voorhees, good to see you. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Heidi Voorhees. I co-own GovHR with Joelle and Earl, who is the consultant on the project, but could not be here tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know you're tight on time. You know, we we would do a national recruitment process with heavy utilization of social media, traditional recruitment efforts using web-based advertising, and also old-fashioned, pick up the phone and call people and see if they're interested. And we handle everything from working with you on putting together the position announcement to the recruitment brochure, to the outreach. You are welcome to see all of the resumes. We can make that happen, but we will also interview the candidates that we think are But we will also interview the candidates that we think are the strongest for the position, come back and meet with you to go over each of those candidates, and you would decide, you know, who you would like to bring in for an interview, and we facilitate that process. So essentially, we do all of the legwork and tee up the decisions, the tough part for you to make the decision.
And you do understand that this would be a committee of all, of everyone?
Absolutely.
Since it's not a search, excuse me, a search group?
Right.
It's all 10 of us.
Yeah, we understand that, and that's how we typically work.
Okay, great. Questions? Alderman Longway.
Could you tell me, how do you make sure that you're able to reach minority candidates?
We have, over the years that we've been in business, both personally and professionally, we have formed relationships with the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, the International Hispanic Network, which recently changed their name to the Local Government Hispanic Network. We are founding members of the Legacy Project in Illinois, which advances women in local government. So we attend conferences, we interact with these organizations so that we have knowledge of potential candidates, and we can also reach out to their boards and to people who are active with those organizations as well. And we can advertise on their websites. So there's lots of ways, in all the ways that I mentioned earlier, through personal outreach and advertising, that we would look for all qualified candidates.
Attempt to diversify the pool as much as possible.
Absolutely. We're very committed to that.
Thank you. Alderman Black.
Thank you, and thank you for putting this together, and Nicole, and the committee, for everyone working on this. I'll tell you that when we had this conversation in October, my position has evolved since then. I think that, based on the feedback I've gotten from town halls and conversations I've had specifically with staff, I think we should do this search in-house. So I'm going to be opposing this at this time.
Okay. Alderman Bray, do you have any comments or a motion?
Thank you very much for this information out of HR. Thank you, Nicole, and your team for poring through the many vendors that we requested and for going through the RFP process. I'd like to make a motion that we endorse staff's recommendation and that we engage the consulting services of Gov HR USA LLC to provide the recruitment services for our position as City Manager. And I look forward to working with this group that was selected, and so I'll leave that there.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sage. Alderman Matthews.
I just wanted to weigh in and just say that I'm going to be voting no to this proposal as well. I think that we have a perfectly good candidate in-house right now, and I would prefer to see us move that direction instead.
Okay. And just so that we can clarify, because we've got quite a few people in the audience, and I bet you're all here for City Manager Recruitment.